All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intereign public with your hands, one nation, under God, in the justiceth with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, uh, what president, TC is, um, a little late or is not here, so we'll just move on. Have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Mayor, you have two add-ons.
Oh, okay, there's two add-ons?
Yes. The first one is, um, there are budget transfers that were handed in later this, latest this afternoon.
Okay.
Um, for the water department.
Great, I got those.
And then there's also a resolution that came down from the state that our attorney will advise you guys on, uh, regarding the notice of claim.
Okay.
And that information is also in your package. And the actual resolution itself was part of your bylaw.
Okay. Any questions on that? Anyone on the board? Any questions?
No, I just said, I mean, add-in and then we can discuss those.
Those are the agendas. Okay, uh, to accept the agenda, roll call, Harmon?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yes, you said before, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Okay. Approval minutes from May 21st, 2013 to June 4th, 2013 meeting, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, Public hearing, local law, number nine of 2013, amend new section of the village code making the following roads, two-way travel, Rossaway and Wood Avenue from, uh, Breaky Avenue to Atwell Lane. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay, roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Public hearing, local law, number ten?
We've gotta open a public hearing.
Oh, this is, okay, open a public hearing. It's about 7:06, we're gonna open up a public hearing, local law, number 10, 2013, amending local laws passed in 2011 regarding medical transportation in the village of Monticello. Uh, we're gonna open up?
No, we have it. Number six first.
Wait, number six?
That's the two-way.
Oh, women, these are opening up, okay, excuse me. Okay, we're gonna open up 7:06 for number six. I thought they were already, okay, anyone for a public hearing on number six?
Please.
Uh, Barbara?
Okay, this will be relative to any additions, amendments, or changes of any kind at this time. So it's six, it's seven, it's everything. The Sullivan County budget must provide a more realistic calculative base for economic development before considering legal or otherwise change. Set provision the removal of budget line items shown to be unnecessary, whether mandated or unmandated programs or positions, thereby providing a basis for financial calculation, further planning, want, need, whereby all inclusive is better quality of life, respectfully, Barbara Burton. P.S., regarding leadership and staff qualification, non-bifurcated attitude. And I have a paper here that I will hand in to the secretary, the, the meaning of bifurcation, okay? And it's for you to get the, and, sir, I want Sam to see this passable.
Okay, thank you, Barbara.
This is the one that taught me the word.
Anyone else for the, uh, number six? Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else, uh, number six?
Do you, do you wanna explain it, uh, you're gonna open this street and Wasser Avenue, instead of be one-way from North Street to, no, from, it's from North Street to, uh, Stargies. Now it's gonna be two ways.
Yeah.
Isn't Wasser like a one-way, uh, Denim, Denim Street?
Yeah, but that's the end on North, uh, North Street, so it's, now it's gonna be two ways.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close at, uh, 7:08, public hearing.
Motion, please.
Can I have a motion to vote?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second. Roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Reverend Matthews?
So, do we vote now and yes?
Yes.
Six?
Yeah, I make a motion to go and affect it with the Department of State and the state.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Okay. Number seven, open up a public hearing, we'll open up the local law, number 10, 2013, amending local laws passed in 2011 regarding medical transportation in the village of Monticello. We'll open up at 7:10, uh, public hearing.
Motion.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, okay, roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Reverend?
I don't know.
To open up the public hearing for ten, for seven. Yes?
Yes, I guess so will.
All right, we're gonna have a comment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm talking about opening up the law now.
What is up with the law?
Okay, that's seven.
If I may, uh, chapter 229 and chapter 230 deal with taxi medallions and the medical transportation. The village had been sued, uh, and the people had sued the village, and the village acted improperly in passing that law back in 2011. I was not the attorney at that time. And they sued asking for relief, including about $400,000. We successfully defended the law, we revised the law pursuant to a court ordered stipulation, I reviewed it with the Board and Executive Session. This public hearing tonight is to consider adopting the law. What the Board, what the law does, it complies with what we all believe a law should be. It caps medical transportations at 40, it provides other provisions, but as pursuant to a court ordered settlement, I would recommend that the village adopt it after the public hearing. We've also complied with CEQA, uh, we've done a short form EAF, a negative declaration. That's all combined in your resolution if you want it adopted.
Can somebody explain?
Any question?
Yeah, it's, 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 you know, the medical transportation, so now we, when we adopt the law, we can give permits to operate and the village will be settled. And now we know, we, we have an application, but it stopped because of the lawsuit.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Keston?
Mr. Mayor, the, the resolution, as you read it, to open the public hearing, doesn't mention the changes to the taxi law. I know the, Mr. Lynch did mention in his comments just now, but it's not mentioned in the resolution, um, changes to the taxi law.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution attaches, uh, both chapter 30 and chapter 229, and we actually highlighted the changes to both of the laws to see what it is, basically. So that's all part of the resolution, and, and it's, it's highlighted so you can see the changes.
Okay, it just wasn't mentioned that way, it's not written that way in the agenda.
No, we've added a law.
Are there copies of that available?
Yeah, we could get some copies for you. Yep.
And another copy, that copy. My concern was solely that it wasn't mentioned that way in the agenda. Uh, I believe that I've already read.
Yes, two, two sentences.
Okay.
I believe that I've already read this a couple of weeks ago, I just wanted to make sure that it's, you know, what it, what it was supposed to be and...
Sir, I'm gonna make your comments, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, after the public hearing, this is still sent to the county for a GML review, so if you did wanna close the public hearing, which you could, you have the option here to not approve it or approve it, but if you approve it, it will be subject to receiving the comments from the, from the county, uh, GML review. So one of your options would be, if the gentleman wants to look at it more, the board wants to keep the hearing open, you could do that too. So you don't have to close the hearing today if you want, if you don't want to, or you can't close it, and you can wait for the county to give its GML comments before you decide to add them in.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to hear from the public, close the public meeting, and then adjourn this until we get the comments from the GML. At that time, if the board wanted to reopen the public hearing, they could do that, or not, depending upon what the county says. My recommendation would be to hear the public comment, close the, close the, uh, meeting, wait for the GML review, and when that comes in, put it back on the agenda for approval or further comment from the public.
And it more than specific in the agenda, you know, the law and the changes.
I, I agree with the attorney's recommendation. Is the board comfortable with the attorney's recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, we just don't wanna go down until they come.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, sir?
On this, how much longer do you think that will take? A, uh, GML review by the next meeting, I'm sure.
Okay, 'cause I think we've been hearing this for over 60 days, if not longer.
This is the first time it's been a meeting.
Okay. All right, I know it's been presented and used the word negotiated back and forth.
That discussion, as our court said, the first time it's been on the agenda was last board meeting, it was put for a public hearing, the first one we could, waiting for the GML comments, I expect that within the next board meeting.
And your name for the record?
Kenny Mandal, my EDL is Shoreway Taxi.
All right, anyone else?
No matter what happened, transportation will be available, right?
Yeah.
And not default.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else for public? Okay, we'll close at 7:00, uh, 7:12, have a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Reverend Matthews? Have a motion to vote for the, so, can we vote?
I think you would now move to adjourn it until we see to the GML report.
Okay, have a motion?
We have a motion to adjourn it.
To the next meeting.
To adjourn it to whenever you get the GML report, let's assume it'll be the next meeting.
Okay, I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Reverend Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, and perhaps Mr. Lynch can answer it. At, at the next meeting, will the public hearing be reopened?
It's up to the board, but certainly, uh, you can always give the board comments, uh, at the public portion of the meeting.
I, I, I'm just curious, that's all, I'm not one way or the other, I'm...
Well, I think this board has always been open to public comments, so if you were to ask to speak on that, I've never seen a person in the public turn down.
I understand, thank you.
Sure of that.
That's true.
Okay, number eight, manager's report, um, I wish, no press is here today. I took a trip, I took about 15 kids to Cheney University on a trip, uh, there was about 15 kids, I took a van and took them there, drove them there and back, that's in Pennsylvania, it was a beautiful trip, it was no cost to the village, it was something that I did, I'm not looking for a pat on the back, but if anyone would be willing and would be willing to do something in the community, help and share my ideas as far as getting kids off the street and doing something, I'm open for anyone's help or suggestions. Um, I wish the press was here, they're not here, 'cause I really wanted to address something about my village attorney. The village attorney, there was something in the paper saying that the village attorney's salaries were far exceeding, over, uh, $180,000, and it was, uh, it was in reference that it was over excessive, but what they tend to put in the paper is that, um, the retainers' fees are different than, than litigation, it's more money that you spend on litigation, and the attorney was hired to fight our litigation, which we have, uh, multiple cases in this village. Matter of fact, he just settled, we just compromised with this lawsuit with the Shoreway Taxi that was won, and it's not the attorney that, that, it was part of my initiative to, to say something with this taxi law, I thought different from what it was, and I wanted it a different way, but that's, this is the way, this is how it happened. But for the, but for the press to say that the attorney is far exceeding its, its salary, I mean, they tend to put in there that we wanna, we wanna law in the village that the police department has a, uh, they have a max, they have a, they had a cap, like, uh, I think it was a, instead of 28 officers, it was, we had 30, but no one ever challenged that. So as it stands now, we won that, that case where we don't have to hire three police officers, we can keep it at 10, 15, which I wouldn't keep it at, though, but that saves us another $150,000 by not hiring three police officers, so he did save us money. He probably brought us in about another hundred, probably over $100,000 in, in going after citations and, and fines in this village, and going after delinquent taxes, and all kinda issues that probably brought well over exceeded $100,000. I mean, there's multiple things that I could sit here and say about the village attorney, but I think this absolutely false saying that he's here and he's, he's not making the village money, he's made a lot of money in this village, and he is here to defend what's happened in this village. There are some trustees that say that he's not doing a job, and I, I prove difference on that, and I think he's doing a wonderful job, and it's, it's not what you, it's not what the cost is, is what you, what the result is, and I think we're getting our dollars from what, uh, Mr. Lynch has given our, our, our village. And the reason why I did go out to Mr. Lynch, and I, and, and people are saying, why shouldn't you use a, an attorney that lives in the village? I've had attorneys under my administration that wouldn't even touch certain suits or anything because they were too close and too friendly, so they would literally tell me, I can't fight your fight, and I'm not getting involved with it. But I appreciate what Dennis is doing, and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with Dennis, and I'll say that until I'm out of this seat, but, you know, I had to say that in defense of my attorney, Dennis Lynch, and I think the board is happy with him, and if there is, I hope the board would at least ask the gentleman, Mr. Lynch, any questions or anything, he's here, he's open, and he's doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
I just wanna, I just wanna make it, you know, a correction. We have 24 offices, including the chief, now the chief, they, in the new budget for 2013, 2014, we have, we're gonna have 22 offices. And kinda, we all kinda agree with the tentative budget that they put in for us, that I work with, and the mayor also was included in the, in the tentative budget to agree at 22 officers. Right now, five of the officers retire, so we, we still low with the retirement, almost four offices, but it's only, always been only 24 offices, including the chief of police. And the budget is not 6 million in the police department, the budget is, with the 24 officers, it's 2.5 million, that's what the budget accounts for the unit of funds. I just wanna...
And there's one other thing that I did forget, and excuse me, but I was just in, and, and with the, uh, we have a litigation with the mobile medic. They're in a municipal building that we're paying tremendous amount of money for heat and, and, uh, the cost of that building, and mobile medic, we're after mobile medic for paying at a sum of probably $80,000 that they, that they owe the village, and they should pay that village. Past board members had, had approved the resolution to have the mobile medic pay $12,000 a year, and they don't pay heat, electric, or anything. Prior to that, they paid nothing, on a commercial building, I think that's an insult to the village. We should, we have to run our business here, and they're absolutely giving us nothing. So we're going after $80,000 thanks to Mr. Lynch, and we should get it, and there's some board members that are against that, and how can you be against that? That's, that's, that's crazy. And again, Dennis, I appreciate what you're doing, but we, I was just in, uh, a meeting about recouping $80,000 to the village, because mobile medic, uh, feels that they shouldn't pay because they're doing service to the, that's a business, they probably make millions, millions of dollars on a, a private business, and they should pay what we, I mean, a comfortable, uh, uh, something comfortable to set off the salaries that we need to pay them, so.
Now, I said probably discussion right now, no, we don't have...
Oh, wait, yeah, you're after the public comment.
Okay.
Okay, thanks again, I, I'm sorry to keep going, but I, I just had to really tell, I want Dennis's, I want people to realize that Dennis is doing a great job, and, and I, and I kinda said, I might be a little redundant, but what you're paying for and what we're getting, I'm, I'm proud of what we're getting for what he's here for, okay? All right, so we'll go to number nine. Uh, this is Mr. David Booth, he's gonna do a presentation. David, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time this evening, sure. Just to help speed things along, I've got some things to do here. All right. So, I work with Johnson Controls, and we are an energy services company. We work with municipalities to help them improve their infrastructure, improve energy efficiency, and reduce operating costs. We understand that in this economy, right now, many municipalities are stressed, uh, there are tax caps that are limiting your income, uh, you're in the business of providing services to the public, and that's your primary focus, yet there's often not capital available to maintain their infrastructure and provide those services. So, in essence, what we do is, um, offer projects that improve your energy efficiency of your systems, lighting, heating, uh, sometimes windows, roofs, uh, we also can make improvements to water systems, be it water plants, wastewater plants, water meters that can increase revenue for the village. We take a budget-neutral approach to doing this. In essence, the approach is called performance contracting, on page two. Performance contracting is simply a procurement mechanism that allows a village to make these improvements to their facilities. The improvements are self-funded over time through operational savings that Johnson Controls will guarantee. So, this is, uh, enabled through New York State Energy Law, Article 9. So it's a little bit different than a typical capital project in that, uh, you don't need to bid every piece of a project out. It's a single procurement process, uh, often procured in the manner that you would select engineering sources. The projects are self-funded from energy savings or revenue enhancements. And, and if you look at, uh, this page that shows the graph, uh, you can see on the left side that we're basically using your existing budget, reducing your energy and operating costs, and using those savings to fund the improvements. So it's a budget-neutral approach. If we're lucky, at the end, there may even be some increased revenue coming into the project. So, with performance contracting, you select a company that you want to work with throughout the process. So, identifying the opportunities, designing the project, we do work hand in hand with engineers that you may have already secured. We'll install the project, uh, you have input into what your priorities are and what improvements you'd like to see, and then, once the project is installed, we will do measurement and verification to ensure that you're realizing the savings that we've guaranteed. On page five, what municipalities like about this approach? Again, the benefits are guaranteed, they fund the project, so it preserves your capital for other needs. If you have tennis courts that need to be, uh, resurfaced, or roads that you need to repave, or jobs that you'd like to keep, um, it is a single procurement, so it's much less stress on the municipality in terms of building the project. We do offer a firm price, so there are not going to be any change orders that will inflate the price, which is sometimes common in capital projects. Uh, it's also a turnkey project, as I mentioned, so you select one company, hopefully Johnson Controls, and, uh, we would walk you through the entire process. It's procured, by the way, I mentioned that typically, how you procure an engineer, that can be, uh, however you procure professional services, or sometimes it's through an RFP, so depending on what your legislation is locally, that's, uh, how we would follow that. It winds up getting a lot of work done in a short period of time, so you just start seeing these savings sooner than if you were to do all of these projects individually. And again, we guarantee the level of savings. So we start out with basically a preliminary audit, and that's, uh, what I'd like to present to you tonight. This preliminary audit involves utility bill analysis, so that we have a sense of how much you're spending on your utilities. In your particular case, I understand, um, there might be some opportunities for improvements in the water system as well, uh, so we would look at, uh, revenues associated with that and expenses. Uh, we'll have engineers walk through the facilities and get a high-level view of what kind of opportunities exist, um, what we think a project cost would be, and what the savings would be from implementing these improvements. Then we'll come back and present that to you. And that gives both the village and Johnson Controls the opportunity to determine if, in fact, there's something to, uh, develop there. If there is, then we'll proceed down the path, uh, and if not, there's no cost or obligation to go any further.
But, but there is a cost if you...
If you go further, the next step would be to do a detailed energy audit, it's an investment-grade audit, there's a cost for that, and we'd be able to determine that during our preliminary audit. That cost, however, I should note, gets rolled into the project price, so you do not need to pay for that upfront. The whole project is designed so that it's self-funded, and you're not making payments until the project is installed. And at that point, you're already seeing some of the energy savings. I don't wanna take up too much of your time tonight, but, uh, you'll see a sample cash flow a few pages back. And this is an example of a $1 million project, uh, over a 15-year term, and you can see in this example, we've identified $100,000 of energy savings, operational savings, um, increased revenue to the village. Project costs over the 15 years total $1.2 million, the savings totaled $1.8 million. That means that, in this example, the village would have received, in addition to all of the improvements made that are self-funded, a cumulative cash flow of $600,000. So some of the operational savings could be, for example, with the water meter system, if we were doing so, automated meter reading system, the time and miles that your meter readers are currently investing would be reduced substantially, so you would save money on that end. Uh, in terms of water meters, um, they deteriorate over time, their accuracy declines, which typically would mean less revenue for the village. So, if there's an opportunity to upgrade meters, then people would be paying for water that they're actually consuming, not overpaying, not overpaying. A lot of the savings would come from more energy-efficient lighting, possibly windows, insulation, uh, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, um, things of that nature. And finally, why should you consider Johnson Controls? Uh, there is a page at the end that I invite you to take a look at afterwards, but, uh, we are the most experienced, uh, energy performance contractor in North America. Uh, we've been in the energy business since the late 1800s, uh, we have a very good track record, we stand behind our guarantees, uh, we're a successful company, so we're able to back up those guarantees should we need to. So, we would welcome the opportunity to take the next step and do the no-cost, no-obligation preliminary audit, just to identify what the opportunities are and put some high-level numbers to them. Are there any questions at this time?
What kind of the audit you will do? You say you will do an audit, no? Can you explain it, why, points, this?
Sure. The preliminary audit would involve utility bill analysis, so we'd look at your, uh, fuel bills, your electricity bills, get a sense of how much you're spending right now, and how that equates to, uh, a per-square-foot measure. Um, we'd also analyze your, um, revenue and expenditures associated with water plant, and if you desire the wastewater plant, I understand that project is pretty far down the track right now, but if we can help it out, we'd be happy to. Uh, so that gives us a baseline of what you're spending right now. Then we'll look at the facilities and say, all right, the, uh, heating plant in this building, for example, maybe it's 20 years old, and just because of technology, it's likely that there are more efficient systems that we can use, install. it's likely that there are more efficient systems that we can use, install. So we can basically engineer a new system and determine how much that will save on your energy bill. So the preliminary audit will give you a sense of what we think we can do here, what the cost would be, what the savings would be, is it self-funded or not, or might there be revenue enhancements involved? But again, for this part, there's no cost or obligation.
So right now, you don't know whether we have a problem until you go around?
The little bit that I know right now, my sense is that there's opportunity, yes. I did meet with Phil Clemens at the Water Department, and from what he shared, there's definitely more that we would like to look at there. I understand there's some opportunities with your buildings, some things that you had wished to get done, and my understanding is that the capital may not be there. So this might be a way to tackle some of those projects. Our approach is to bundle the improvement measures. So we would look for things like lighting that typically have a short payback and bundle those with things that have a long payback that often get deferred, such as a boiler or windows. When you marry all of those things together, you come up with a payback that's more palatable. You get a lot of work done. It's all self-funded. Oftentimes, it's seen almost like a grant. It's a way to get a lot of work done, but self-funded, it's guaranteed. Some financial advisors will look at this and say that the debt service will not impact your debt limits. It's often funded through a municipal lease that's exempt, can be bonded.
What, as far as your, with your company, you're saying that you would, we would hire you. What would the bid process be as far as putting out for bid opposed to just hiring your company?
Depending on what your requirements are for professional services. If you need to go out for competitive bidding, we'll say, it's done through an RFP, a Request for Proposals. And in essence, you would say the Village of Monticello is requesting an energy services company to evaluate its facilities, looking at these items, here's a sense of what our utility bills are. Respondents would put together a proposal for you. They would share with you what their qualifications are. The nice thing about performance contracting in Energy Law Article 9 is that you don't have to select low bidding. Low bidding is great, in theory, but it comes with its downside of sometimes there aren't the qualifications that come along with it. We being Johnson Controls have relationships with many manufacturers and contractors throughout the country. So we actually can get some preferred pricing at times. We also get competitive pricing if we're looking at hiring subcontractors.
Because if you, if you decided to hire you, with the bid process, we would hire you strictly on just professional services, just picking your company, right? But if you, what would happen if you bid it and it was so, it was, it was, the bid was so, a lot lower, where not thousands, but maybe tens of thousands of dollars, where you would say, we'll take Johnson if you can match this bid? Would you, or you're set on, you're set firm on your, on your, on what you're coming in with?
Typically, you're looking more so in this process at qualifications and how much work the company is telling you they can get done. So in essence, the more work that somebody says they can get done, the more savings that they can find you. That's typically who you want to go with. Somebody who you're going to feel comfortable working with, and that's where, again, Energy Law Article 9 comes into play. It waives Wicks Law, so the low bidding requirements are not a part of this process. The Request for Proposals takes over, and you can follow a typical NYSERDA Request for Proposal. The state energy authority has gone through this process and has guidelines on it, and that's typically what municipalities will use. But it gives you a lot more leeway in selecting who you feel most comfortable working with and confident working with. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. Helen, do you want to come up?
Yeah.
Helen Budrock Renaissance.
Update for you.
And the signs?
And the signs.
Where is the signs?
Show and tell.
Show and tell. Oh, I have to look at the signs.
I thought it never going to come here.
It's like a long time ago with me.
I know. There's two there.
So I just wanted to give you a very brief update on the progress on the sign program. You'll recall that there was some feedback based on the DOT, you know, project about the loss of the on-street parking on Broadway. You guys have plenty of off-street parking in the parking lots, you know, behind Broadway, but some people that aren't familiar with the community either don't know how to get to them, they're not really well-signed. And there's also the issue of people feeling safe walking through the alleys and the parks and the other places that provide access to some of those real lots. So we've been working, Sullivan Renaissance has been working with the village over the past year. You'll remember it was probably about a year ago that David Gibson came, gave a presentation with some different designs of how the signs could look. You guys picked a preferred design, and we're at the point now where we had put it out to bid to sign fabricators to actually fabricate the signs. They came up with more detailed, you know, shop drawings and specifications, and I'm at the point now where I'm ready to sign on the dotted line and move ahead with fabrication. So I wanted to give you an update just in case there were any questions before we go ahead and have the signs manufactured. They'll take about five weeks. So at this point, if everything looks good to you guys tonight, I'll approve it tomorrow, and the signs will be delivered probably towards the end of July with an installation around the first week in August. So you'll see, I have detailed shop drawings and other things which I've reviewed with Jim Steinberg, but what I put together for you was just kind of a summary. There are 18 signs altogether. Some of them are vehicular for folks driving in the car so that they know where to turn on the side streets to get to the parking lots. Others are lot-identifying signs, so that when you get to the lot, it says free parking, and this is the name of the lot. We talked during the design process that now all the lots are going to be color-coded. So what we're calling the Jefferson Lot is sort of a burgundy purple, and that's because the closest cross street is Jefferson Street. The other lot is orange, we're calling the Liberty Lot, because the closest cross street is Liberty Street. And then on the other side of the Broadway, we have the two Lakewood Lots, which are blue. So all the signage will identify the lots not only by color, but by name, so that people walking down will know, okay, I need to park in the blue lot because it's close to this business that I want to go to. And then there are pedestrian-oriented signs, so that once you get out of your car and you're behind Gassar's Pharmacy, if you're not familiar, there'll be a sign there that says Walk to Broadway, so that you'll see, okay, I go through this alley and I'll get to Broadway, and then once you're on Broadway, on the other side, it will say, you know, Walk to Jefferson Lot, etc. So these are some samples that the sign company sent me. This one is the A-type sign. This is a vehicular sign that, you know, will designate, you know, when vehicles are driving. Obviously, this is not to scale. This is just a sample, but I wanted you to get a feel for, you know, the weight. The way the manufacturing process is, is it's, yes, it's metal, and it actually has reflective white vinyl, and then the graphics are printed on top of the vinyl with the letters, you know, basically kind of cut out. So it is reflective at night, when the car headlights hit it, the white letters, you know, will reflect, and it'll be very easy to read in the nighttime. So this sign is actually to scale. So this is one of the pedestrian signs. It's the smallest. The vehicular signs are obviously much bigger, because you have to see them from a further distance away. But in this example, this sign will be in Sheriff Park on Broadway. So if you're walking through Sheriff Park, there'll be a sign mounted on a pole that says Walk to Jefferson Lot, and then on the back side, it will say Walk to Broadway. So some of the signs you'll see are directional on both sides, depending upon where they're located, and those signs where it doesn't make sense to have something on the back side, because you're going down Broadway and you can't kind of turn from the opposite direction, you'll see on the back, it has that nice Welcome to Monticello, you know, logo with the green mountains that kind of emulates the, you know, the banners that you have down on Broadway.
That sign for Sheriff is going to be this color?
Yes, yes. Because again, all the signs are color-coded, so Sheriff Park, the parking lot that is behind Sheriff Park and Joe's Park is the Jefferson Lot. The signage that on the two alleys, the one by Gassar's and the one by the Chinese Restaurant, will be orange, because that lot back there is the orange lot, the Liberty Lot. So hopefully, that'll give people some visual cues, you know, again, not only color-wise, but name-wise, and hopefully, that'll, that'll catch on over time. So that's basically where we are. The signs are being funded through the Streetscape Grant from Congressman Hinchey, the same grant that went to pay for the, you know, the lighting and the banners and some of the other amenities on Broadway. So unless there are any questions, I will go ahead and authorize them to start fabrication, and Jim Steinberg is supposed to be assisting with the installation to cut down on some of the lighting.
So one question. Sheriff Park is going to be, yes, the name is going to be this size, and this is going to be big?
Yep. And again, it's because it's pedestrian, you're going to be standing right in front of it, so you'll be able to read it very easily.
All these letters were reflected with the lion and the lion.
Yep. So you should be able to read them fairly well at nighttime. Yep. And the other thing...
And there's a whole up?
Huh?
There's a whole up?
I'm sorry?
The writing and everything.
Yes. I don't know what the warranty is, but yeah, the graphics and the signs are warranted to, you know, stand up and not fade. Yep, exactly. Yep. Because I know that's a concern, the replacement costs are a concern. And the other thing that we're working on with the village, I talked to Mayor Jenkins today about getting together with him and Mr. Snowden next week to take a look at the alleys, because once we have the signage in place and we're encouraging people to use those access points to the parking lot, there are some lighting, you know, improvements that could be made, you know, some strengthening up to do in those alleys so that people feel comfortable, you know, using them, that they're attractive and well-lit and safe. So that's kind of, that's the next phase while we're working on this, so.
Yeah, 1 o'clock, James, Monday, 1 o'clock.
Monday is the busiest?
I've got a couple questions.
Yes.
Now, on these signs, will we be installing new poles?
Yes.
And what color is the poles in?
The poles are, they're basically lollipop signs. There'll be one post on one side, so it'll be kind of like a flag, and they'll be black, power-coded, so it'll be similar to the streetlights and the railings on Broadway with that black, you know, sort of sturdy, power-coded finish.
Yeah, because we try outside with the white and black. Remember when it was the marbles before? And we see the black, it was reflecting more.
Now, the poles have, they're going to be in the ground? We have to dig, break concrete, and all that other stuff?
Yes. I'll be going over those details with Jim. I can share some of the shop drawings with you if you want to. They all meet DOT specs for the breakaway posts. They have that six-inch coupler, so that, you know, a car or something hits it, you know, it breaks away. I don't know the other specifications off the top of my head, but I'm happy to share them with you. I've been working with him on that. And again, DPW agreed to assist with the installation, primarily the digging of the holes and the pouring of the concrete, and work with the sign companies so that, you know, when they do the installation, it'll go that much faster, so.
So it's going to be before the Lego Festival?
I hope so. We'll see. First week in August is what we're wishing for. Okay? Very good. Any questions? You're good?
I just wanted to, Helen?
Yes.
Renaissance at the front and the village.
Oh, the village.
It's beautiful. I just wanted to take, yes, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Very nice.
In between raindrops.
Loose nights, even after the bar, that's four in a bar, it's still loose nights.
And I should have, at the next meeting, I want to bring, we received a really nice letter from somebody from Munda Valley, who just wrote us a letter out of the blue, you know, just saying how the daffodils just kind of brightened her day and how, you know, beautiful it looked in the spring and everything. So I'll bring it next time and read it to you. It was really, it was nicely written.
No, they look, it looks beautiful in the front. Very nice.
I don't know. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen. Yep. Okay. We'll go to 10. Resolutions. Set a joint meeting date with the Town of Thompson for annexation of SBL number 31-1-10.3, 31-1-10.2, and 31-1-94 to the village on Tuesday, July 16, 2013, at 6 o'clock. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second, yeah.
Roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Resolution authorizing to spend Chip's monies in amount of $145,608.90 to pave and place and reclaim village streets as selected. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion. I saw the list.
Okay, second?
I'll second, too.
Okay. What'd you say, Carmen?
I just wanted to say that I went around with Jim, too, and I know you did, too.
Yeah, I was supposed to, but I...
Reverend Matthews didn't go there yesterday, and I know you won't.
Yeah, but he did actually. He was at the office.
If it's any extra money, it's going to pay back.
Everybody's happy?
Yes. Yeah, that's, we went around, and I know they're needed, really. I feel more comfortable now.
All right, okay.
That the list has been provided to us, and we went and looked at, I think so everybody get the same.
All right, thank you. Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Resolution appointing Marshall and Sterling as service agent at the Greater Metro Agency and General Agent as brokers for the Village of Monticello. Health insurance policy at no charge for the village. Can I have a motion?
You know, I, okay, I make a motion, and I want to have a question about this.
Second? Okay. Yep, what a question?
Is nobody here to provide us more information about this? So I really would like it if we can table and talk to us directly, because I have a question about no charge and nothing.
Because he was here, but he was here, when was that? He was here.
Almost last year.
Yeah, that's, that's year, but he don't provide, being a broker without charges, and I really would like it if he explained it that part, you know, and really, I have a folder from last year, but it was a reference to different things, no, no to a broker and no charges.
Because what he's going to do is just bring the, he's going to try to, we don't have a broker, so...
Yeah, but we still have time till December anyway. We can't...
But I mean, what we should start doing is we should act on it, because this guy's, these guys come with these insurance policies, you know, I'm not telling the board what to do, but we keep talking about insurances and insurance, and then the guy comes and then we just sit on it. We got to, we should make a decision on some of it.
But we don't, we don't, I really felt comfortable that he explained it, and again, to be no charges and to be a broker for the health insurance, which you know that everybody has contra. Also, my point is that the health insurance is no, you can't change it to December 31st.
Right.
So we still have time. In next week, he should come and explain it to the board, this, you know?
But he was at the board, he said he could save us $65,000. He did the whole...
It's my opinion only. As a one-member member, you know?
All right. So what I'll do is, what I'll do is I'll have him call you guys or something, or he can come to the meeting, but he was here, he explained it, and I mean...
I mean, that was really...
$60-something thousand he could save.
If we can have like a refresher of what occurred last year, if there's any changes or anything, then that would be good.
All right, we'll have him come to the meeting.
What about if we table? If we table and let him invite him to explain it to us, what are the changes?
All right, we'll have him come to the next meeting. But we could say, I mean, he, all right, well, what we'll do is we'll tell him to come to the next meeting, and he can explain it to us, again.
Yeah, I make a motion to table, and that way we have more explanation.
Okay, roll call Carmen? Oh, I think she did. Yes? Larissa?
Yes.
Okay, Reverend Matthews? All right, I'll have him come to the next meeting. 13. Resolution rescinding the prior resolution passed on June 4, 2013. Request proposal for insurance brokers for the village liability insurance policy and authorizing the clerk to send out the RFP. and authorizing the clerk to send out the RFPs. Is that together, uh?
No, we, we rescinding this, this one first.
No, you're rescinding the first one.
So we had to go to council the other one that we voted.
Okay.
Yeah, make a motion to rescind.
Okay, second.
I second it.
Uh, roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
Reverend Matthews. Okay, resolution requesting proposals for insurance program for the village of Monticello liability and property insurance policy and authorizing O.M. McCain to present the information to the Board of Trustees at the July sixteenth, two thousand meeting. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
I second it.
Okay, roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
Reverend Matthews. Okay, um, uh, public comment? Ma'am? Uh, yep.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm, I'm concerned about the mobile medic because I don't think they, uh, they, um, covered by Medicaid and stuff. Because one day I called them because my son had an asthma attack, and they sent me a bill, a bill, bill forever, and then they started calling me, if you don't pay, we're gonna take you to court. I said, you just came to help my tech, fifteen-year-old who had an asthma attack, and you worried about your money? So I, you know, and they kept billing me, and I said, well, next time you call, I'm gonna charge you for harassment. Because the fact that you came to help a little kid and you want me about the money, I don't think Medicaid and those insurance fidelity, you know, that don't pay for it. So they, you know, charge you separate. So, you know, I would like to know more about that. And, uh, and I feel the more we built in Monticello, the more things that are getting open, the, the crime is rising. So a couple more costs will be nice. I don't need nobody's help, but I'm telling you with the gangs and everything, it's crazy.
There's a meeting, um, oh, boy. Cora Edwards sent me something in the county. They're having at the fire department. Do you know about?
This is saying days are meeting.
Are meeting, July sixteenth.
Yeah.
It's a, it's Neighborhood Watch. I think if every people, you, maybe you could spread the word to get involved with Neighborhood Watch. Because it's the guys out there, the people that live here should call and, and complain and see a report, and that's what's, you know.
I'm saying now because my son is involved, you know. He's coming home all beat up and he's nineteen, but he's got a disability. So I went to surgery court today to get, um, guardianship because, you know, he's got a disability and people don't understand that he came home to, I'm not gonna have a kid die out there. I'm living every day fearing what's next. He had came beat up two times and, you know, e- every day he walks into the door, I, you know, I cry that he made it on. So I'm really fearful. I'm talking about my own son, who wants to be out there hanging around, and people talk to him, the mayor, everybody talks to him, but he don't listen. You know, he's the one that sits here with the after, and I'm very concerned because he'll tell me, oh, this happened and this happened. He'll go tell the school, this girl's father to Estemayam, this is all for stop it.
If there's any complaints, call the police department. We're out here trying to stop everything we can. So, and don't hesitate.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yep.
Yeah, hi. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Trustees.
Hi.
Um. Orvashi Gupta Tutu. I, uh, work in the high school as a physical education teacher, and I am the coach for the boys and girls varsity tennis teams. Um, I run programs at De Hoya's Park in the summer for the kids in the community. And we've had, uh, some, uh, problems with the tennis courts, a lot of cracks. And I believe our superintendent and the school district, as a goodwill gesture, because we play, both teams play at the park and we use it, uh, they fixed the cracks about a couple of weeks ago. They spent a large amount of money as, again, it was a goodwill gesture. And I was later told, the understanding was that, uh, the village would help resurface. It's called resurfacing, but it's a special kind of a paint. Uh, and if it's not done within a reasonable amount of time, all the cracks that were put on the lines, et cetera, will once again open up because this, uh, resurfaced paint is waterproof up on top of that. So I just wanted to ask you also, the girls' team starts practicing and playing, I believe it's fifteenth of August, and the park is packed with players in the summer. Very large amount, uh, players play at the park. They're very, very busy in July and August. And other than that, the boys and girls team play there. So I was wondering if you had any idea when you could resurface? I did give Mr. Greco one quote, and I'm working on a couple more quotes. And, uh, uh, I believe they might be a little less expensive. Because if those, now the lines have all been, there are cracks in the lines. We cannot play competitively at the park at, at all unless those lines are painted and the court is resurfaced. We cannot play at all. So, I mean, in the summer, it's okay, but competitive tennis, so I will get your quotes. I'm very familiar with, uh, companies that pave. I'm familiar with the companies that pave and they're working on the codes. I have to actually tell them. We're trying to work out, well, maybe you'll do this area. One of the courts said, no, it's gotta be all done. But one of the guys has said, maybe you'll work, uh, and do certain areas where the patching needs to be done. I don't know how long that'll last, but I was just wondering if that, if you plan to do it? If so, when? If not, that what the school did was probably a total waste, actually fixing the cracks. So, since there are no lines, we cannot play the girls' team or the boys' team. So I am anxious and requesting yous to, if there's a timeframe, um.
Yeah, Tutu, I just wanted to say, I saw your proposal for nineteen thousand dollars and two hundred. My understanding, the school put twenty-four thousand dollars to fix that.
They put twenty-four thousand dollars to fix a course.
You only put one proposal.
I am unworking, yes.
If the board say, we, the, the school, we do it and we will help it, we send it. This is a very high price, nineteen thousand dollars.
I, 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 I'm a hundred percent agree with you.
Even if you have three or four, it doesn't have to be a specific three.
Okay.
But maybe you find more cheaper to do it, you know? Because this is a lot of money.
Okay.
And because of the school uses most of the time for the teens and, and every teen, maybe, you know, they pay the twenty-four thousand, but, uh, you know, they also use in a tennis court.
But also the public uses it. Sorry to interrupt you. Uh, uh, the public does use, we bring in money in the summer. They, you know, people pay five, yeah, they pay and we get twelve. We do make money, which I, I drop off, sorry.
Thanks. So just. This is only one proposal.
Yes, no, I will.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the board said, but I think so we need more proposals.
I will, I will take care of that.
And go with the lower, you know, and see.
And it, I had another, just, I understand from Mr.
You can do it too. I'm gonna go there, say, if you look and she goes and explains when you wanna come. There is a court.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm doing the kids program. I'm starting the kids program. The other thing I wanna do, I understand from Mr. Greco that the courts must now be left unlocked, uh, the whole day. He told me it was instructions from, I'm not sure. I just.
It wasn't instructions from him.
No, it was, no, but I, I, we don't know now.
All right. Okay, that's what, so I just want to tell you, having been there, I'm there since nineteen ninety-five. I don't take any salary. I just.
I don't mind.
No way. Okay, I just run the programs. Let me just quickly tell you why that would be, uh, a lawsuit waiting to happen. When the nets are up, I have personally, kids are on the courts with skateboards, jumping over the three and a half-foot nets, number one. Secondly, dog poop. People walk their dogs inside the courts all the time. Uh, thank God I'm a school teacher. When these kids see me, they run for their life. They know that I know them. The third thing is people ride their bikes on the tennis courts. The fence in the middle dividing the two courts is kaput or broken from the bottom. If anybody jumps off a skateboard or runs their bike or people are playing baseball, all things that should not be happening, there, there's gonna be another lawsuit. If it rains, people go and play slipping. So I keep a very, very strict control. So may I please request you that those courts be locked in the evening and they be opened in the morning?
Yes, it's always been like that.
Well, I have been told that they, I was told they want it open twenty-four hours.
No, they, we never, we never direct to leave it open. So I'm glad you came to us because the day, I don't know, I was talking to someone.
And, and the last thing I wanna tell you is there's, if you could put some signs, this has nothing to do with tennis because that's my profty, but I spend all day long at the park in the summer and the fall and, and the spring. Uh, there are people who come from all over to walk their dogs at the park and do not pick up. It is a destination for dog walking. I've requested over the past several, please put signs. You know, I have some wonderful signs I've picked up from other parks. Then I will chase them and report them. But if there is no sign.
Because all rich guys, they have signs with dogs.
Or all over pine bushes.
I could get Jimmy to get some signs to put up there.
I have a wonderful piece of wording that I can give you for the signs.
All right.
I mean, I gave that proposal. Also, in the pavilion, there's all kinds of stuff going on. Smoking and I'm not gonna tell you what, but you can use your imagination. Music with words which are.
And the night?
Oh, during the day, the afternoon. And I have little kids and.
And nobody supervise the parks?
There's, nobody.
Nobody?
Well, you know, people, Mr. Greco comes and visits and he does what he has to do, but he has other obligations, I suppose, the pool and the rec center, so he can't be there all the time. So I kind of chase people down, please don't smoke here, please don't use this language. Then the speeding of ATV is going around, speeding. You will have a child who is very seriously harmed because the park, the kids are there. Again, this doesn't concern tennis, but as a human being and somebody, I've been there a long time. I care and I like to do a lot of stuff for the kids and, uh, you know.
I'll ask the chief to randomly go up there and check things out.
I really appreciate it.
And if you need, if you brought those up there, you'll call, and then you'll come up behind them.
And the last thing is, the village has never bought any equipment. I just want you to know, my teams do a fundraiser. All the nets are from fundraisers that we do. Uh, the bleachers over there, we raised about eight hundred bucks a few years, bunch of years ago. We have the bleachers, squeegees to wipe. We, we don't take any, it's all through fundraisers. So I just want you to know there's no.
And also you got a grant, no, a fisking hundred? Did you get a?
I, yeah, that is for programs, for adults. I'm starting that in the summer and for children. Starts actually tomorrow. I'm trying to excuse me for children.
The agreement with the, um, superintendent was, um, and I appreciate what they did, but the agreement with the villagers that they were gonna, they would do the patching and, and, and what they did. And they did a wonderful job.
Yes, they did.
But we were gonna paint it.
That's, that's what I'm requesting you.
And that proposal, though, it says they're, they're doing the work that the, um, in that proposal, the school already did that work.
No, no.
No, it's only for painting.
Painting means resurfacing. The correct word is resurfacing.
It's thirty-eight thousand and then, you know, uh, square feet. The school, the school already, already paid twenty-four. So now we have to do, it has to be a special paint.
Feather patches and cracks.
It is a special paint.
And it has to be marked.
Yeah, but this is all, this is, it should just be painted now.
That's called resurfacing, thousand. It's called resurfacing.
But how can a, but a, but what I'm saying is that, how can a, it's just a paint, shouldn't be, this is nineteen thousand.
No, no.
Only for painting because it's professional paint. It has to be a special paint.
It's not regular paint.
Right, right, right.
It's a specific paint.
Yeah.
For the court, and then the outsiders, otherwise you'd have slippage.
Well, what I'm gonna, me and James went up there. He's the code enforcer. We'll look at it again and we'll price some paint, but believe me, this is not nineteen thousand.
I'm working on two courts. I promise.
So we'll look at it. We'll look and see.
Yeah.
But we can, we have to be careful.
I'm getting one from Superior Paving that's doing a lot of work for the school. He is giving me a quarter. I'm, I'm gonna meet him next week and we're gonna go over what we, how we can cut down on this cost, so.
Because even our men, we got, we, we have men that can paint it, can do things. There are these guys who are paying.
Special paint.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, it has to be done professionally.
Maybe you should ask this school to put a half a half.
But we, we have to look at it. Mr. Snowden's gonna look at it, and then we can see what we're paying for. Because I could, I, I'm not a professional in it, but I know it's not nineteen thousand dollars.
No, we, I'm.
So we'll look at it.
So they shouldn't, you know, hanging around the park for just anything. Because a lot of stuff be happening up there. A lot of gang members, smoking, fights.
Yeah. You know, most of the places that I went, including Monroe, that has a beautiful pool and every team, at six o'clock, they close.
Well, we close too. We have, what time do we close?
I'd like to close the courts at, at seven because, you know, it's very hot.
Yeah, it's, it's night anyway in the summer.
What time do you close down? What time do you lock up?
Last year was a whole different bunch of rules which I'd never dealt. Mr. Greco has asked me to cut down on help out there. Earlier, we were open till six. He says the village would like, uh, would like hours cut.
I'm not aware of a lot of things that you're saying, but.
You should meet with the mayor.
Meet with me and we'll talk about it. Because I, I'm not aware of any of this.
Because now we've, last year we were nine to six. People pay to play on the courts.
No.
No, you know what? The mayor is an active manager. Any team that you have, you send there, you come to his office.
I just had a conversation. Then he says you only open nine to two.
No, no.
So it's a free-for-all after two o'clock, and then weekends.
This Tutu, would, no, chief, could you please meet with me during the week? Just meet with me, anytime you're ready. And we can talk and we'll get it together. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll talk. James?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, do you want us?
With the signs she asking about with the dog feces and stuff, we need that through Broadway as well.
Okay.
I agree.
I'll talk to the superintendent and we'll get the signs made up.
That's why I'm here today because I'm getting a lot of mixed messages. I don't, I care for the park. I've been there years. Other than that, I, I mean, I'm not on a payroll or anything. It's just means a lot to me at, at that park. So I don't know why, but, uh, it does.
Give me a call anytime during the week. We'll sit down and we'll get everything straight now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time, uh, and thank you everybody. Thank you very much.
Hello, to see.
Thank you.
We have to do, we have to.
Would you want me to prepare for next meeting a resolution prohibiting, uh, the death of the dogs, uh, waste and not being cleaned up?
Yes.
The board that considers the next meeting along Broadway and Village Property.
Yes.
Can we put in any more fine that we give them a mortgage? I just said that. Yeah, we had to.
Oh, okay. What would the other two add on?
Budget transfer.
We have, uh, cabin motion for the budget transfer to the water department.
That's, yeah.
Water second.
Carmen second.
Okay, roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
And Reverend Matthews. And what was the other transfer?
Uh, the notice of claim. Can, this is why he has to do that.
What this is, is that New York State law is providing for an additional way of filing a notice of claim against the municipality. You can do it the way you normally do, which is to serve the, uh, the clerk, a certified mail return receipt, serve the village attorney. Uh, the New York State passed a law allowing for an additional way in which you serve the Secretary of State electronically. There's a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for this additional way, and that money gets split with any village which wants to participate in it. Uh, our recommendation is the village take advantage of that opportunity. It does not prohibit people, it does not prohibit people from serving a notice of claim the usual way. It's just an, an avenue, an extra avenue of revenue that the state will get and the village will share too.
What if benefits is changing for the village to?
The village gets some money, some additional money.
To, right now, we.
Well, the village gets no money when you file a notice of claim, uh, but that's because, you know, some of them, the village is open, you know, he's committing to serving a notice of claim. But this is allowing, it's allowing an additional way electronically. And New York State is doing it, I believe, for New York State's benefit because they get some money. But they also share some of the money with the municipality. That's if you want to use this particular way. It's not required. It's optional. If you are somebody that wants to sue a village, you can still do it the old-fashioned way, which is walk in and serve the clerk.
So, so it's benefits to the village in a way that's more formal and also because.
I don't know if it's more, I think it's a revenue way, to be honest with you. I think the state wants to get some money, and they know they can't ask for money without sharing it with the municipalities. But I, there are probably a lot of places way upstate New York, like SS County, where maybe hard to serve the clerk. Sometimes clerks are not full, are not full-time. So I think the state is taking advantage of the new electronic internet issues and trying to make some money. That's what I believe. But I, I wasn't part of who passed the law. I just, what, my surrogates. But it doesn't hurt the village?
It doesn't cost any money for the village to obtain the notice of claim, any notice of claim filed or anything?
It does not. By knowledge, it is not.
I think it's good, it's a source of revenue.
So we got the resolution there, can, um.
Okay. What is your, roll call?
I need a motion.
What kind of a motion?
I'll make a motion. Do you wanna read the resolution?
No, you wanna, she wants to read the resolution first. Right, what, um.
Yeah.
I read it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, resolution, uh, designating the New York State Secretary of State as agent for service of notice of claim. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa and Reverend Matthews. Alright, we were at, uh, we were at public comment. Anyone else for public comment?
And so go party.
Sir?
Yes, uh, good evening. My name is, uh, Alguira Kahani. I believe a month before last, I came here to speak with relation to some issues I was having with the village and issues on service of process. And you're going to get a note within the next couple of days. I actually, I put the note in this afternoon. Uh, my complaint was that the service of process has not been, uh, at least in the case of my parents. And I see now that, uh, Mr. Lynch copied Meacham LLC. Uh, I spoke to the, uh, the owner, uh, he has a place in Kingston as well, but he has a place on, on, on Broadway. The mobile station on Broadway. The, the issue still remains that when the village, whatever offices in the village, has a complaint to file in court, that there's a due process, uh, process, for lack of a better word, uh, with relation to service and affidavits of service and, and the whole line of work before a hearing gets into court. And so now things are, are, are coming to a crescendo where even though I spoke and said what I had to say at the last meeting, Mr. Lynch wasn't there, Mr. Lynch was, I guess, forced to on May fourteenth, write a letter to the court saying that there's a court date on the fifteenth that he didn't know about. And quote unquote, uh, he, nor was he aware of any notification given to both defendants. So I've written the board of trustees at least two times on this particular issue. Then I came here and spoke about it and yet the code enforcement office did the same thing again. You know, and this, this is a, this is a huge, this is a huge issue. So now, uh, Mr. Mayor, that you're the acting, uh, manager, do you specifically handle these, these issues?
No, it's in, that's in court, it's in litigation with your court case, I ca, I couldn't even.
No, 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 we're not referring to that.
Well, I could, I can't answer that question because that's with the attorney and you and I, I couldn't comment on that, not at this time. Uh, if the attorney wants the advice, whatever.
We're referring to, we're, we're not, we're. We're not referring to the actual case of what's going on. There's a service process that has nothing to do with court.
I would have to, before I comment, because there is some issues that I would rather not comment on. I'd rather talk to counsel and see before I comment about anything.
Can we do that in executive session?
I have to take the advice on the attorney.
This is public comment. Mr. Kahani's made his comment. Once he's finished, obviously speak to the board.
Alright, we'll speak to the board. I'll speak to the board. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, last comment, five, five minutes is, uh, not over. I filed a FOIL request, uh, to get past paperwork. So very clearly, uh, which you'll see in the note that I'm going to pass to you as well. Again, with just, not just specifically my case, when you actually go through the paperwork, you'll see that notary stamps were used improperly and that, uh, service of process that was supposed to come to where my parents were or where the legal address was, that the paperwork was not served. On top of that, the paperwork was served to some building in Monticello, on Broadway in Monticello. Clearly, clearly, clearly improper. And no one has a right to waste the village's time, the village's money in frivolous and silly lawsuits. So the public needs to know what's going on here. And it's not just the village of Monticello, the, the, uh, the county attorney's office does the same thing. I've had cases thrown out of court. This case needs to be thrown out of court just based on defective and negligent service of process issues. So somebody is going to have a lawsuit and then Mr. Lynch, obviously, his, his firm gets paid, uh, et cetera. But then the village has enough issues and then people are paying additional funds over and over and over in court for something that should not happen in the first place. New York State has very clear rules on service of process and it needs to be followed. And right now, it's not being followed. So there's no reason why I should come here two months ago and everyone hear what I have to say and then at the very next, uh, so-called court date, Mr. Lynch has to go and write a letter saying he doesn't know about the cases coming up. And we have no evidence of the cases coming up. No one in this village, no one in the state should have to, uh, be a victim of so-called, uh, what would you say, uh, bench warrants? Or threats of bench warrants when no notification was given for the hearings. So that's something that has to be tidied up. Thank you.
I'd like to say again, but it's, um, we'll talk, I'll talk with my board, there's two sides of the story and we'll discuss it and we'll have some. Anyone else for public comment?
Can I say?
Thank you. Any, yeah, oh, okay, yeah.
You know, this is, um, the air conditioning, they fix it. Remember, we bought it after thirty-five?
Yeah.
And it's only, yes, a report.
Okay.
And they fixed the air conditioning and now it's only thirty-two hundred. And it's some recommendation that I think so, James, the, the, you know, he was looking for you yesterday. I don't know if he leave you a copy. I can give you the copy, so you don't have it.
I don't have it.
You know, and so I give you because he wanna talk to you about the, in the roof, you know, so I give it to you. But it's fixed, so.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's just, it's there to pay and we, it's working and it's less money than we expected, so.
Thank you, yeah, okay. Okay, we're gonna, can I motion to go on executive session? Discussion with Barton and Judas?
For personnel.
And personnel?
I make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa and Reverend Matthews. Okay, thank you.
Helen, Helen, can I go?
Second?
A second.
Okay, roll call Carmen? Carmen?
Yes.
Roll call Larissa and Reverend Matthews. So, um, okay, we had a.
We have the water.
There are two issues from executive session. Number one, it would be a resolution, the village will resolve the waiver, the attorney-client privilege with regard to testimony by Nugent at tomorrow's hearing, the response to a subpoena. That's my understanding of resolution the board wants to consider.
Okay, can I have a motion? A motion?
I know we discussed that in executive session, however, um, after we had left out of the room for a few minutes, the board, being to the fact that we all have been subpoenaed, you know, we're not, we're a little on the fence with that.
Let me just say that being a subpoena doesn't make a difference from a legal viewpoint, but it's the board's call.
Right. I think that if he was called to, if he was subpoenaed as well and he was called to testify and he has information, that should be on his own, why?
That, because a lawyer cannot answer questions that deals with communications with a client unless the client consents.
But, but we should, we should mention the case. The case is what is going on now in, in the court.
Correct.
Regarding to T.C. Hutchins.
Correct.
So, and that's what, because here is a little.
Well, I indicated in executive session, we have executive session for certain reasons, that Mr. Nugent was subpoenaed by trustee Hutchins, that he was called, uh, his attorney was called to testify today, that because he's not allowed to testify about things with the village who's his client unless the village consents to it. So what we're asking the village board to consider, and they, they may want to, and they, they may not want to, is to allow.
Yeah, I think this is helping, right?
It helps bring the truth out, that's what it does. And without your saying it's okay to do that, he cannot testify about matters he discussed with the village. So what this allows is the, is the testimony to come out. If you don't grant the attorney-client waiver, he cannot testify tomorrow on those issues.
We have to do roll call. Roll call Carmen?
Why, no motion in the session.
Okay, I have a motion? Oh, a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Everything's sour, you almost had it.
This allows testimony to go forward. Without, without the testimony, without the waiver, you can't, you can't testify.
We're just, we're just.
No, I said we, no, it was no second, so what about we do the other, uh.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
There's no second, no second. So we're just gonna, it failed.
Okay, the second resolution is to withdraw the hardship application loan and close after all requirements on the USDA grant as soon as the law allows. Correct?
I make a.
Withdraw the hardship application and close on the USDA loan as soon as possible.
Roll call? I mean, can I have a motion?
I make a motion, I'll second it.
Second? Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa? Reverend Matthews? Okay. Got a motion during the meeting?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Reverend Matthews. Alright, okay, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, let me go eat.
I haven't eaten all day, ref. I haven't eaten all day, ref.